Evening. School board meeting is called to order. Would you please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Paul.
Here.
Mrs. Brecia.
Here.
Ms. Island.
Here.
And Ms. Blen.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. I'd also like to recognize one of our councilmen, Tom Ossina, is with us this evening. Thank you for joining us, Tom.[71.00][71.00](Laughter).[72.00][72.00](Applause). We have superintendent spotlights tonight. Ms. Al Radford, would you like to... Whoop. Pause one moment. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Yes, ma'am. Under old business, we need to add Jenny Dean Elementary School Design Update, and then under new business, Joint Compensation Committee Recommendation and Discussion.
Thank you. Can I get an approval of the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I'd like to make the notion that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the public meeting agenda as modified.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Mrs. Brooks of the school board meeting. The school board of the city of Manassas approved the public meeting agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Mrs. Radford, will you please bring us our superintendent spotlights?
Okay. Thank you, Chair Seberg. Good evening, other members of the board, and good evening to our audience tonight that are here with us and to our viewing audience. I am very honored to stand before you tonight with one spotlight, but it is for many. As you can see, we have a great group of students here with us tonight. I want to offer on behalf of the school board, congratulations to the following Osborne High School students who successfully auditioned and made this year's all-district chorus. There were twenty-seven ninth through twelfth grade students who auditioned, eighteen were selected, and there were four alternates. Of course, we are proud of everyone who auditioned. The auditions were held on November 7th at Forest Park High School. Students had to sing a prepared piece and sight read eight measures of music on sol faj. They will perform... I think that means something with the relationship of notes or something. They will perform with other students in the county February 9th through the 10th, 2024, at Gainesville High School, under the direction of a special guest conductor. Some highlighted scores include freshman Alex Michaels, who was the number-two base one in the district, and Senior Samantha Lopez Montes, who was number-four alto-two in the district.[256.43][256.43](Applause). I have a little more information to share, but I'm going to go ahead and call the students forward now, and as I call your names, please come to the front. We'll start with... This is treble alto-two Nelia Abrego.[272.63][272.63](Applause). Tenor-two Omar Calderon.[279.77][279.77](Applause). Alto-two Keila Campos.[286.45][286.45](Applause). Tenor-two Aiden Castaneda Garza.[293.27][293.27](Applause). Alto-two Correl Maxine Deacesis.[300.02][300.02](Applause). Treble alto-one Vivian Deacesis.[305.33][305.33](Applause). Treble alto-two Roxana Espinoza Valadaris.[313.08][313.08](Applause). Let's see. Treble soprano-one Tiffany Garcia.[321.33][321.33](Applause). You may have to kind of stagger a little bit for us. Soprano-one Ada Husband.[329.71][329.71](Applause). Alto-two Samantha Lopez Montes.[335.31][335.31](Applause). Treble alto-one Isabella Mendez.[340.43][340.43](Applause). And they can kind of start filling in on the other end as well. Base-one Alex Michael.[349.43][349.43](Applause). Michaels. Tenor-one Rubalesi Najaro.[357.43][357.43](Applause). Base-two Isaac Quintanilla.[363.69][363.69](Applause). Tenor-one Kellen Reed.[370.21][370.21](Applause). Treble alto-two Melanie Valadaris.[379.21][379.21](Applause). Treble soprano-one Adriana Willard.[388.52][388.52](Applause). Alto-one Erin Yoon.[394.52][394.52](Applause). We had alternates for alto-one Vanessa Hernandez.[402.02][402.02](Applause). Treble alto-two Keila Rich.[407.21][407.21](Applause). Alto-one Alexis Wittig.[411.08][411.08](Applause). And treble alto-two Anne Marie Zackel.[415.87][415.87](Applause). In addition, we want to offer congratulations to Alex and Correl, who successfully auditioned and made American Coral Directors Association Southern Division Honor Choir. Yes.[434.93][434.93](Applause). This is a huge accomplishment, because this audition had over seventeen-hundred applicants from across eleven southern states who competed for a hundred and thirty slots to be in this top honor choir. Students had to prepare a piece to sing. They will travel to Louisville, Kentucky, February 21st through the 24th for a conference to sing with Dr. Frederick Fox from Michigan State University and composer/conductor Sidney Guillaume. Congratulations to all of these talented students. We have our Director of Coral Activities, Shirley Glom, is here.[471.62][471.62](Applause). She's going to come up and take a picture with the group in a moment. And Principal from Osborne High School, Mr. Flugrath, is with us tonight.[482.15][482.15](Applause). Congratulations to everyone, and if you would mind pausing so we can get this photo in.[490.24][490.24](Music). We know you're super proud of them. We are too. Okay? All good. I think that's it. I think that's it. Okay, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you all for being here, and congratulations.[568.79][568.79](Applause). Chair Seberg, that concludes our spotlights for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Next up on our agenda is Board Committee Reports. We don't have any of our standing committees with a board report, but Mrs. Stevens, would you like to say something on behalf of Employee Compensation?
Um, we've... The Compensation Ad hoc Committee met, and we will have an update to our committee meetings and some recommendations that we made. That will be under new business on the discussion agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up on our agenda is Citizen Comments. And I have one person signed up. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in a conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. And up first, I have Mr. Harry Clark.
Hi, Madam Chair, Board Members. Thanks for having me. My name is Harry Clark. I've lived in the city at 9273 Bayberry Avenue for about thirty-three years. I'm here to encourage you to adopt Concept A, or a version of Concept A that preserves athletic fields when you consider replacement of the Jenny Dean schools. Back in 2016, when I was on Planning Commission, we did a comprehensive plan and a recreation parks needs assessment. Back then, it was acknowledged that we had a very bad deficit in green space and open space and athletic fields. We have... We had then, and I think we still have, a deficit of about ten or more recreational square fields. We had a surplus of smaller fields, diamond fields for kids to play basketball, or I'm sorry, baseball. But most of that was because of the E.G. Smith Complex. And the E.G. Smith Complex is probably going to go away. We don't know right now where it's going to go. At one point, we talked about putting it at the Jenny Dean Fields. To give you an idea of how bad we are, what deficit we have, if you take the traditional parks and also the school amenities, put them all together, the acres per thousand residents back in 2015 was 6.82. The national average was 9.5, so we had a deficit there. We estimated that by 2025, now just around the corner, acres per thousand residents would drop to 4... 5.47. National average would still be about 9.5 or so. If the concept that you adopt for the new Jenny Dean takes away the athletic fields here, it would have a very detrimental effect on our ability to... Or the ability of our citizens to have recreational space. So I urge you to take Concept A, or consider strongly Concept A, or some variation of that that preserves the fields. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak during Citizens' Comments?
I am Lynn Forkell Green. I'm a Manassas City resident, and I'm here to support Concept A. Much to your expectation of what I'm going to say, is similar to what Mr. Clark had to say, is Jenny Dean Athletic Fields and Park has been on the comprehensive plan for quite some time to preserve athletic fields for our residents. I understand, and I am super excited, that we need to build a new Jenny Dean School. I am so happy we're at this point. The problem at play here is this land use decision affects things for many years that cannot be recoverable. It is unrecoverable. We cannot use school fields in place of athletic fields at a public park. Schools are not in session all year long. It is not a priority of schools versus green space to our residents. What it is, is the residents wants to have a city that meets all of their needs, or as much of their needs as possible. And I think when we're talking about youth, we need to provide for all of their needs. And outdoor recreation is super important to mental health. It's important to our family health, and it's also important to our community health. So I'm asking you to please consider Concept A, or a version of it that protects the fields. If we're able to add more parkland, once everything is said and done, that's fantastic, that's needed, but anything that reduces what we already have is a problem, and it's a problem that cannot be resolved easily. It's actually... We're out of space. So I would almost rather see you build up than out. And also, I would just like to say, whether we like it or not, our city is not going to get much bigger. We only have so much space. There's only so many places to build up. We have a community that now has an airport that is expanding, so that changes what can go up in those corridors. So our schools, the ability to expand the schools are not really going to be as necessary as it is to protect green space. And I know that that might seem harsh, but that's just where we're at. We already have schools that are not full right at this moment. Jenny Dean needs to be replaced. That's happening. Please protect the parkland. I know it's not usually your purview to have to make the land use decision along with the school needs, but I'm really asking you to consider the entire holistic approach for this project plan, and I appreciate your thoughts and consideration as you do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forkell Green. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak?
I just wanted to speak on behalf... Oh, sorry. I'm Ally Forkell, woman of Manassas City resident. On behalf of the students who spoke during the whole process, and I know it wasn't directly to you guys for a lot of it, it was they spoke to the council when the GMBL fields were being sold, and a lot of our students spoke out, came to numerous meetings, and these are kids who don't even talk in class, who talked in front of council members and different things, that they wanted more soccer fields, and more football fields, and more space to play, and, you know, it's almost a little hypocritical that we're like, "Yeah, get off your cell phones and off Snapchat and put TikTok away," but they have nowhere to go. You know, football practices get interrupted because kids are jumping fences to play. So I really hope you guys consider Concept A, so that way we can keep these fields. Part of it was that the fields from GMBL would go to the Dean Park. And yes, we need a new school, and I'm sure you guys have great design concepts for this school and how we're going to help our students, and I know academic success is one of your first priorities, but we have a great opportunity to think of both priorities, and I think putting our student voices first and making sure that they felt heard and respected is a big part of keeping our One Osborne culture and our Manassas City culture that we love so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forkell. If you'd please sign in. Anyone else like to speak tonight during Citizens' Comments? I would like to encourage those that spoke tonight to please stay for the presentation for an update. Thank you.
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Williams, that the school board of the Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, we're on to our discussion agenda, and first up will be some old business, Jenny Dean Elementary School Design Update. And we have our architects, our RMM here to present, Ms. Allison Legg and Mr. Jack Clark.
Good evening, Chair Seberg and Board Members. We are very honored to be here this evening to represent RMM and the Design Committee for the new Jenny Dean Elementary School. Again, my name is Allison Legg, and I'm an architect with RMM Architects. Also, welcome to the audience members, both here in person and also on our virtual platform. So we are very excited and honored to be part of the new Jenny Dean, and we have a number of updates since the previous school board meeting and also the joint session with the city council, and we're happy to share them with you this evening. So our agenda for our presentation is we will review our team and the Design Committee, who have been instrumental in the process and design of Jenny Dean Elementary School thus far. We will talk about the process, the site concepts, the floor plan, the HVAC system, what the exterior of the building is going to look like, and then our next steps moving So our team is a group of seasoned and certified professionals. Again, my name is Allison Legg. I'm the project manager with RMM Architects. Jack Clark is here with me this evening. We have another principal, assistant PM, and interior designer who rounds out our team. We've all worked together before, and we're very excited to be part of this project. We also have a team of engineers, civil engineers, mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers, structural engineers, acoustics, food service consultants, cost estimator, and also a lead consultant. We've all worked together before, and we are very confident that this team will design a great school for the City of Manassas. We've been very fortunate to have an engaging design committee. The design committee is... Includes folks on the school board, as well as folks from the school division, and we've been very fortunate to have their collaboration throughout this process thus far. So just to share with you what our process has been since July of this year, when the project kicked off, all the blue dots represent times that we've met with the Design Committee, and we've been meeting for about three weeks, every three weeks. The green dots you see have been smaller sessions that we've worked with school staff to develop ideas and concepts prior to bringing them to the Design Committee. The dots you see in yellow are where we've had public sessions with the school board or the joint session. And we've been very appreciative of the feedback received at all of these meetings. So the site concept. After the joint session meeting, we heard a lot of really great feedback, and also tonight from citizens, and we heard that the fields are very important to the city. And so the school board and the Design Committee has heard those, and we are accommodating those fields that are being displaced into the new concept. So the new Jenny Dean School is important to be located with a visual connection to Wellington Road and Prince William Street. Being able to see this new school from the road is welcoming, and it also allows for wayfinding. The main entrance to the new school will be seen from Prince William Street, so visitors and parents coming to the school will be welcomed and greeted by that main entrance, and they'll be able to see it from Wellington Road. We understand that locating the new school, sort of on the northern part of the site, does displace a rectangular field and a triangular field, and we've heard those as very important site amenities to the community, and we're proposing that they be relocated elsewhere on the site that can be accessed by the community, both during school hours as well as after school. It was important to locate them on the site, and we thought it was important to locate them near parking that would be for the community, and also accessible along Dean Park Lane, which the new park and amenities would also be accessed by. The new school will be a two-story school. We also have shown provisions for expansion in case there is additional student growth in the future. The current enrollment at Jenny Dean is about six hundred students, and the new school will accommodate nine hundred students, and growth is expected to meet that in the next twenty years. Some of the other site amenities to support the school are new parking and parent drop-off at the front of the school. Car traffic would be accessed by Prince William Street. There would be a long queuing area for parents who are dropping off their students and picking up their students. Bus traffic would be separated from the car traffic. Bus traffic would be... Enter the site from Dean Park Lane using existing roads around the existing Jenny Dean School. There will also be an additional access road that connects the bus drop-off to the car-access road for buses that need to turn left onto Wellington Road, as there is a street light at Prince William, but there is not a street light at Dean Park Lane. The new school will also have a number of outdoor amenities. What's shown in yellow are potential playgrounds. We also heard that a track space was very important to the school and the community, and we are showing a location on the north side of the site. The existing triangular field that is located right along Prince William and Wellington Road will remain untouched and will be available for community use throughout the duration of construction. I did want to make one note, that the new field that we are proposing along Dean Park Lane is a regulation-sized field, and it's actually larger than the existing field right now, which is not regulation-sized. So not only are we providing that space, but we are also upgrading the amenity for So moving within the building, the new Jenny Dean Elementary School will be two stories, about one hundred and ten thousand gross square feet. The capacity is for nine hundred students. That's the expected growth over the next twenty years. The maximum capacity for the school is just over a thousand students. To orient you to the floor plan, the main entrance is planned south, and that would be where students being dropped off by parents or car traffic would enter the school. That's where visitors would come and enter into a secure vestibule, be greeted by the admin office, get the appropriate badges, and only be released into the rest of the school once that security protocol has been followed. Students arriving to school by bus would enter on the north side of the school. Everything in light yellow is circulation, and so that's how students and staff and visitors would circulate around the school. That main corridor from north-south that connects the bus entrance and the main entrance, that sort of separates the public space from the private space, so everything on the left would be spaces that could be accessed after hours, such as the dining, the gym, the music space, which has a shared stage between music and dining, and also Media Center is located right at the heart of the school. One of the comments we heard from the joint session meeting was providing some sort of security to secure these public spaces from the more private classroom spaces when there is after-hours use. And we have heard that comment, and we have reviewed it with the Design Committee, and we're moving forward with including some doors that would secure the corridors and secure these public spaces from the more private classroom spaces. All the spaces that you see in the light blue are classrooms. The classrooms are organized by grade level. First grade is located in the northern section of the school. Kindergarten and pre-kindergarten is located on the right side of the plan. Second grade is located in the southern section. The blue areas that are a little bit more teal are project-based learning spaces, breakout spaces, that can accommodate small groups and other types of learning that's not within the classroom. All the spaces that you see in orange are support spaces that would be support for staff in order to serve the students of Jenny Dean. Some unique features for the school are think tanks in the media center, there is a broadcast room, there's a family liaison room, there are learning stairs, and there's a multi-access The second floor of Jenny Dean is for classrooms, and there's a third-grade wing on the north side of the plan and a fourth-grade wing on the south side of the plan. The central area with T- The central area with teal and red and purple spaces are all specialty-type spaces and project-based learning spaces. The learning stair is also open and can also be used as a breakout space or extension of learning. This is the proposed new elevation for Jenny Dean Elementary. This is the entrance that you would see as you turn from Wellington Road onto Prince William Street. It was in very, it is very important to the design committee to really pay respects and honor Jenny Dean for the wonderful woman she was and the support of education she had for the students here at Manassas City. So very clearly on the elevation, you can see Jenny Dean Elementary School. We wanted to also bring in the mascot, the dolphin, on the outside. And there is a silhouette of Jenny Dean right there at the entrance with children showing her support. The facade is brick masonry, very traditional, not too dissimilar to the existing Jenny Dean School. Also, brick is very common in this area. So the building will be sighted contextually and will fit in. We also have metal panel that brings a little bit of a modern touch to the building. And the main entrance, we wanted the scale to be really modest, welcoming, but also the right scale to be very welcoming for young elementary school children. The HVAC system that has been selected for this school is a four-pipe VAV system. The reason why this system has been selected is because of the cost per square foot. It's a very affordable system. It is also a system that is very commonly used in schools. And it's a system that is very commonly understood by maintenance staff. So this system will be able to serve the school well as well as have professionals to maintain the system throughout the lifetime of the school. So next steps. We've shared with you the updates to the site concept E and we hope that the changes made are well-received by the community. Right now, we're working on interior design concepts and we're including historic components and special interior/exterior features. This building is planned to be a lead silver, so we're working through those requirements right now. We had a meeting with Jenny Dean Elementary School leadership yesterday and we plan to update the faculty and the community again in January. We also have plans to meet with the permitting officials to make sure that our building is on track to meet all of the requirements. Our overall project schedule, so right now we are in December and we are in schematic design, which will last for two months. We will move into design development and then we will move into construction documents, April through August. The project is scheduled to be bid in September 2024. After all the bids have been received and the school board approves and contracts with a contractor, construction will begin January 2025 and we expect construction to take about 18 months. Right now, the most important part of the schedule is really getting the civil concept finalized and submitting that to the city. There are a number of submissions that need to be made that are all sequential. So again, thank you so much for having me this evening. It's our pleasure to be here to represent RMM Architects and the design committee. And thank you again, Chair Seberg and board and audience members for having us.
Thank you, Mrs. Legg. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Brooks?
I want to thank you guys for going back to the drawing board and putting in, you know, putting so much effort into adding fields back in so that we have our fields and we have, you know, this idea. So thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Breschek?
I would also like to thank you. I bet you guys were working over the past weekend and I know that's never fun to do, so thank you for that. My question is cost. What does this do to our, you know, putting the fields, you know, further on the south side of the property? What does that do?
So right now, we are preparing a cost estimate. We are wrapping up concept design right now and we are pulling together the plans for the building, the site concept. All of our consultants are pulling together narratives and then it will go to our cost estimator. So we will have a number for you in January.
Okay. I would imagine that adding the field, the part of what the issue was with, you know, the Site A conversation was that's the lowest point of the property. So I am still a little, I wouldn't want to build a field that's wet all the time, you know? So I want to make sure that if this is what moves forward, that it's actually a good usable field. And we got a million dollar or $2 million, you know, we got a pretty steep price tag for that earthwork to do the building. So I imagine that the $51 million cost that we got earlier is going to go up at least. I know you don't have the exact number, but it's probably going to go up, correct?
It is possible.
We'll find out.
We'll find out. It is a lot easier to put a field rather than a building in a challenging part of the site. A building is a lot heavier than a field, so there are those considerations as well.
Gotcha. And these fields, the rectangular field that we are moving, that's technically off of the city property, but we would still be funding that, building that. This would still be included in the Jenny Dean cost?
I believe.
So not a question for her. I'm sorry. For is. Would, the fields are still our responsibility even though they're technically off our property line that are being proposed here today?
That would be correct. I think the comment that I received during our meetings was that whether it's our property or city property is all the community's property and we're all working together. Some of the Dean Park, which we're all excited about, is on school board property. And we worked around that. We didn't ask for any concessions on that side. This is a team effort on the city and the school board and we're looking forward to it.
I also, thinking about the schedule a little bit, I want to reiterate, I am happy to see the amenities relocated. But I have been surprised once before. I don't want to be surprised again. So I do want an opportunity to hear more of what people have to say as this is more broadly publicized. I know everybody did their best to make sure that this meeting was advertised and people could see this. Is there anything, I just want to make sure that our community meetings that we're scheduling in January, we still have the opportunity to take that feedback. Like that feedback that we're soliciting is going to be real feedback that we can actually apply to these plans, correct?
Yes, absolutely. There's always opportunities to make change and during design is the most cost-effective time to make change. Construction documents begins in April. So that is when the design team prefers to have all decisions made. So we can, you know, heads down, pencils, and prepare those documents for permit submission as well as for bid. However, that period of time is still perfectly fine to make decisions and make changes. There's not a big price tag at that time. Once we move into the bid period and a contractor is under contract, that's when then changes start to cost money. So as long as we are involving the stakeholders as early as we can, in January, we still have plenty of time to elicit feedback and respond appropriately. There should be a good amount of time to make sure all voices are heard and addressed.
And do we, and this is a question maybe for, I know that we are going to be additionally speaking about this. We are, the school board is going to have additional, an additional work session on this, I believe. But are we, do we have any formal way of communicating this with the council? I know we had a joint meeting recently, but I want to make sure that that relationship is going well.
We can do that. We can send our presentation and.
And I'll be meeting with acting city manager Chief Keane and Matt tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment, Ms. Chair. Yes, thank you for going back to the drawing board. I think this meets a lot of, a lot of people's concerns and it makes me real happy. I didn't want everything all crammed together. One of the big changes from back in 2017 rendering was we were going to demolish the old Jenny Dean. Well, it came out of committee that they suggested we not demolish Jenny Dean. So that makes, that definitely changes what we're going to do fast forward to today in 2023, 2024, 2025. So I appreciate all the hard work and it looks like we could even do something within the track for some more green space as well. So I appreciate all the surrounding space. Education's changing. We're, I think work-based learning is definitely the wave of the, it's really not the wave of the future. It's the wave today. So this allows for more space around the school itself for our students. And I truly appreciate all the hard work you all did. Thank you, Allison.
Before I go on to Mrs. Spall, you'll be next. Mrs. Garza, could you pull up Dean Park Phase 2 map that we have from the city so that the citizens can see what is going in, in the park, the new features? And while she's doing that, Mrs. Spall, do you want to go ahead with your comment?
Sure. I just want to take a moment, if I could, to visit a timeline. There's been some suggestion from the community that maybe we should have brought community members in sooner than we have. And I feel like we have had, until we learned of this low-lying area problem, we had five meetings in four months. And in those meetings loosely, we, you know, starting when we made agreements with our joint commission, we went through modifications to the spec school that was selected. We made HVAC decisions. We did student and furniture placement, you know, maneuvers, if you will. We looked at the exterior elevation and signage, all up until the 20th of November when we learned of this potential problem. So, I mean, I don't think that we've let any grass grow under our feet. We haven't been hiding anything. We've been, you know, conducting business as usual. And at the time that we learned that there was a problem, you know, we moved forward. I was very happy with the selection of the new location. And so until we all got to talk and, you know, more people were brought in, we didn't really even realize. It's not that we didn't realize that there was a problem. We hadn't looked at the entire site to see what kind of accommodations could be made. So as everyone has said, I just want to thank you, RRMM, for moving quickly, for hearing our residents. You know, we certainly in no way, shape, or form have wanted to take away any green space, any opportunities for children to exercise, any opportunities for children to expand, you know, their social, emotional learning abilities. So going forward, you know, we did learn of the location issue on the 20th. It was revealed to council in a joint session on the 30th. You know, we now have a field update on the 11th or 12th of December. And always, we have planned on having a community member, a community meeting in early January. So I just want to make sure everybody understands what the timeline has actually been between June 26th and right now. So that's all. More of a statement than a question.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. And I'm going to add to that, that we have a webpage in the works that we can continue to keep the community more informed. We understand there's some misinformation out there. We want to make sure that everybody has the correct information. So our webpage should be available by month end and we'll put that out on everything. Mrs. Stevens, Vice Chair Stevens, did you have something to add?
No, I just had a little quick question. When we look at the new plan where the potential playground, it's got the potential track and then underneath it is the Columbia Gas easement, final easement with. We can put a track, we can put things over that gas easement as long as it's not a building?
So we're not sure yet. This easement is very old and we've been trying to track down some very specific information on it. Typically, yes, how you've described an easement is correct, where you can build site amenities over an easement, but typically not a building. So in case the gas company needs to come, they can cut up a field, they can cut up asphalt and make the repairs and it's not going to affect a structure. However, in the documents that we've received and have been reviewing, this might be a special type of easement. This is not the correct word, but to describe the difference is it's more of, it could possibly be an exclusive easement, which means that the easement is not just below ground, but everything above. So if that is the case, then we would not be able to construct any site improvements on top of the easement, which is why this concept is showing a smaller track that respects that line. However, if, if, and once we are able to figure this out a little bit more, if this easement is more of a traditional type, then we can only get bigger. So we kind of wanted to, at this point, show the worst-case scenario, so to speak.
So potentially, that potential, potentially that potential track. Don't mean to use the same word twice. So it's possible that that potential track could be a little bit larger. This would be the minimum size. Okay. Thank you.
Yes. And we did hear from the design committee yesterday to make that track a little bit more standardized, put a distance to it, and also put some more amenities within it, whether it's a field or playground, whether it's grass or turf. That could all be decided, but that will be shown on the next iteration of this concept.
Mrs. Garza is working to hopefully bring up the Dean Park Phase 2 plans, but if not, anybody can go on the city Manassas site, type in Dean Park phasing and it should pop up. Some things that I'd like to point out about the new Dean design for E is I like the two access roads because it helps manage the flow of traffic throughout the day, both for staff arrival, for deliveries on one side of the building and service vendors, buses coming in and out, and also kiss and ride where families are dropping off their kids and picking up their kids. I love that the legacy of Jenny Dean is forward-facing, where the community can see it. I like where it is set apart from the park to one side of the park. I think that's better for safety because anybody can walk into a park. And we've got 600 kids that we're going to protect. Field replacement options, I believe, are very adequate, but I'm not sure that the rectangular field should be our responsibility, but we'll have further conversation on that. And with that, I'll go to Mrs. Garza. Do we have not yet?
Chair Seberg, we do show part of that, the new park improvements on our site plan. If you want me to speak to what we can see?
Sure. I think she's trying to flip back. Oh, there we go. Okay. Okay. So on this map, this is showing what the city's putting in as far as park improvements in Phase 2 of their plan. So in addition to the track and the softball-baseball field and the rectangular field, this is what the city would be implementing. This is their plans. So all of this is in addition to what we're doing.
And this is a different orientation than the RMM concept plan, so.
Okay. I think we're good. Thank you, Ms. Legg, and we look forward to our upcoming meetings and more updates. And we'll, on our side, on our communication. And we'll, on our side, on our communications department, we'll be working on the webpage to keep everybody informed.
Thank you, Chair Seberg.
Thank you very much. We'd like to recognize Mr. Wolf. Councilman Wolf has entered the building. Next up on our discussion agenda is legislative priorities, a joint statement that we have participated in. Mrs. Williams, would you like to present that information?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Real quick, I would like to share with you that the GMU's Char School of Public Policy, the regional elected leader forum facilitated the regional public school leader network. So you see why I'm stumbling over my words. That's a lot. With Chair Seberg, Mr. Hawkins and I participated in, along with nearly all of the Virginia Northeast Region School Boards, everyone except Manassas Park. We met on September 15th and then again on November 3rd. We together developed a white paper. This white paper is jointly crafted. It's a, it's a statement coming from the work we did together and a response to the most recent J-Lark study, which is a joint statement that mirrors most of our legislative priorities already. What, what is J-Lark? Let me explain that a little bit for those watching. The state of Virginia, the General Assembly often will, will have questions which will entail an intense study and they actually hire a firm to complete studies. They recently completed a study about public education and our funding, among other things. The joints, by joining forces with our fellow Virginia Northeast Regional School Boards, we really bring a stronger message to the General Assembly as they consider restructuring public school funding. And my, to my fellow school board members, with your support, it will be the consent, it will be on the consent agenda at the first January school board meeting so that we can truly present it, legislative visits in January when we go to Richmond. Just a few highlights. This was on our, in our board docs as an attachment to read. But I just wanted to highlight a few things and I, I won't, I'll try not to make it too long. Honestly, what we talked about was what really could Virginia look like in the next five, 10, 20 years? Adequately funding public education in the Commonwealth could transform teaching and learning for K through 12 students. Project-based learning, personalized learning and resources to support student learning. All learners would be well-supported academically, socially and emotionally as a result of access to wraparound intervention and student support services. We really need to leverage the best technologies. Opportunities would exist for all learners, including more robust opportunities for advanced placement, dual enrollment and competency-based experiential learning. Students in well-resourced schools and well-prepared educators would learn, collaborate and achieve in ways not yet imagined. Most joint legislative audits and review commissions, which is the J-Lark, reports and outcomes from national studies to outline challenges the Commonwealth is currently facing. We currently face quite a few. So I just want to highlight real quick. I'm not going to read all of this because you all can read, read all. But the legislative priorities from our group is number one, funding for education. Number two, educator recruitment, support and retention. Number three, student welfare and inclusion. And truly in sport, support engagement and inclusive and culturally relevant educational practices that support the diverse learning in Commonwealth, in the Commonwealth. We really call on the Virginia General Assembly to address the needs highlighted that I briefly mentioned above. Pre-K through 12 funding over the next decade is important and we really recognize that that is going to take a lot of work from the General Assembly as well as our municipalities, as well as our boards, and really as well as our citizens. So with that, I believe that is going to be on our first meeting in January. And we'll be approving it at that point in time.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Did anybody have any questions? It's really mirroring, mirroring many of the items that we already have in our legislative priorities, so. All right. Before I go on, I would like to recognize MEA. The Manassas Education Association is in the audience, Ms. Tammy Potts and Mr. Brandon Fincham. Thank you for being here. Next up, understood student achievement, Osborne High School. Mr. Mike Flugrath will present an update on implementing their continuous improvement processes at Osborne High School, focusing on students' academic needs.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman School Board. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Mike Flugrath, the proud principal of Osborne High School. I'm here to share our student achievement and update you on our academic progress at Osborne. First, start off with our vision and mission, which was created collaboratively with our faculty and staff. Each student becomes a positive member of society, maximizing their potential. And our mission to ensure a safe and inclusive environment for all of our students to help engage and empower and excel them emotionally, socially and academically. This helps drives our decision-making at our school. First, I'd like to share our on-time graduation data. The line in blue is, represents the overall on-time graduation. Over time, it's, they started collecting this data in 2008, okay? And then line in red is looking at our English language learners on-time graduation data. You can see over the last four years, we've seen a steady increase in our on-time graduation rate. Currently, it's grown to 12% in the last four years. Right now, it's on the highest on record at Osborne High School. Likewise, for our English language learners, we also seen a growth in the last four years of, of almost 20% to the highest on record as well. When you compare us to other jurisdictions and the state, Manassas City had the largest gain and we're one of only three jurisdictions to show increase last year. Falkir went up 1.5% and Arlington increased by 0.1%. We had the largest increase in English language learners as well, with only Manassas City, Falkir and Stafford showing an increase. Manassas City Public Schools outperformed Prince William County, Loudoun County, Fairfax County, and we surpassed the Virginia State average for English language learners on-time graduation. Looking at some of our successes with on-time graduation, we look at our state performance exams we added for World One and War Two. Now we've added those for U.S. Virginia history as well. Targeted SOL remediation, we call SOL blitzes, which is like reviewing for the makeup SOLs. We just completed one for science last week and soul studies this week. We saw some gains last year in math with that, so we've expanded that throughout. Target instruction for work keys. We looked at resequencing our science courses to help our students in biology set them up for success. We're starting off with environmental and then biology. And then using our ADFA math courses to provide remediation. We worked with Metz Middle School, looking at students by name and need, and working with our evening school. We added study resource classes this year to give targeted support for students. Basically, we're replacing what we used to have as a advisory period last year. It was a little more of a catch-all and this is much more targeted, much more controlled. And the students who need that targeted support are assigned a certified teacher in that area to help them remediate, to improve. Looking at our dropout data, comparing the last four years, we've, again, in blue is the overall rate. We've decreased by over 10% and now we're third lowest on record. And our L's have also shown progress of a 20% decrease to the third lowest in our school history on record. You compare our dropout trends with surrounding jurisdictions and the state, you can see that Manassas City had the largest improvement. We're one of only two jurisdictions to show improvement last year. Falkir improved by 0.7%. We had the largest improvement with English language learners as well. Manassas City and Manassas Park showed improvement. Only two of us showed improvement. Manassas City Public Schools outperformed Prince William County, Loudoun County, Fairfax County, and the state average for English language learners with our dropout rate. So we like to call that our One Osborne culture, where students feel welcome and accepted at Osborne and we're glad they're not only staying in school, but they're also graduating on time. So looking at our, some of the strategies that worked that we're still adding to for decreasing our dropout, we're doing Saturday home visits. We added Blended Learning Academy. We added evening school, GED program during the day and in the evening. Early interventions when students are enrolling, overage students enrolling. We work with them right at enrollment time and also counseling any students that are looking to withdraw. We want to make sure they know their options with GED and other options so they don't drop out of school. This year, we added additional strategies with our career strategy and work-based learning program. Chris Taylor's done a lot with that. Eric Godwin's done a tremendous job with our work-based learning. We added GED instruction in Spanish, increased communication with our families and that was a lot to our family liaisons as well about attendance. We have a protocol, attendance protocol with tiered supports, where we have student care team meetings, student support team meetings, attendance contracts, more communication about attendance. The counselors are involved in that process and working with our on-time graduation coordinator as well. I do want to mention over the last four years, I was honored to come here at Osborne. Four years ago, we had an on-time graduation plan. I wanted to, you know, recognize Ms. Chair Skinker. One of our outcomes of that on-time graduation plan was to have on-time graduation coordinator. And she works hand in hand. We hired Larry Gilligan as our attendance officer four years ago and they, their offices are right next to each other and they work as collaborative team with our testing coordinator to not only do the Saturday visits, but to have at-risk students, we like to call it at-promised students that are on the edge, to make sure they get the home visits and make sure they get the attention. So it's a strict monitoring of these students that's just helped over the last four years. Let's see here. For our overall SOL scores, we did drop in writing and in biology and we have a plan to raise both of those. But we did also show some improvements in reading, went up two points. And in algebra, went up nine. I will say the reading was interesting because we actually opened up reading. It was 11th grade and we moved it to 10th grade. So we actually had younger students taking the reading SOL, but we still improved. So that was kind of a nice to see. And we wanted to start that off younger, so then in case they need another opportunity, they'd have another opportunity to take 11th grade. And then Algebra One, we really attribute that success. We focused on blitzes, remediation blitzes with Algebra One students and we, and now we've expanded that schoolwide because we saw that was successful last year. For our overall scores, the science, you can see we decreased to Level Two and our plan to support our students there was a resequencing of our science courses. So the students who struggled in biology, we identified those students working with Metz that struggled in English and math and we provided more support. We also provided an environment, intro to environment course that prepares them for the biology course next year. And as well as our targeted classes to help them get the support in the study resource classes as well. The study resource classes and blitzes, we're expecting to see increases in all these areas for that. Chronic absenteeism, like I said, we added stricter protocols there and follow-up and follow-through, just to give you an idea where we're at now. Last year in December, Osborne High School had a 22% chronic absentee rate. Now in December, we have 8% chronic absentee rate. So we're seeing some early returns on the implementation of our protocol with our counselors, with communication with families, the more communication, community about importance of attendance and the follow-up and follow-through with the supports for students. So we're seeing some there. You can see our college and career civic readiness was a new category. And that's similar to on-time grad and dropout. Those are cohorts. So in other words, what, what we're seeing in on-time grad and dropout is a cohort that started four years ago. It takes time, you know, and where SOLs is more of a snapshot. So they might not coincide. In other words, you might struggle on SOL test and not do well the first time and that's what the state's going to record, the snapshot of that. However, our students are going to remediate. They have a study resource class, going to Saturday learning seminar. They're going to take it. We're going to blitz with remediation. They're going to take it again until they pass it. So our on-time graduation rate will go up, but that SOL score is like a snapshot in time. Where, same thing with college and career civic readiness. That's, that's a cohort. Now I do feel confident our plan there, we're adding EPF into, excuse me, we're adding service learning into our econ, personal finance classes. So they'll get that service learning opportunity there as well as with our CTE work-based learning. We just had a CT night with over 1,300 students at Osborne last week. So I feel good about our plan in place to help raise CCCRI to Level One as well. The dropout and graduation rate again, that cohort over the last four years, it's nice to see that through. We still want to see the rest through, but I give a lot of credit there for Chair and Larry for that. Our achievement gap scores with student disabilities. Number one, working with the students to realize and the families, the testing accommodations they deserve, make sure they get those accommodations they deserve. Increase inclusion. We've been working with our sped and our step-by-step inclusion with Stetson, making sure students are getting the inclusion instruction that they deserve as well in collaboration with the cycle at work. So we started off with time for our collaborative teams to meet during the day in our master schedule, focusing on collaborative teams driving quality tier-one instruction. And then we added in the structure of a cycle that works. So the collaborative teams each has a clear role and role clarity. And now we've added in our cooperative learning strategies there, so make sure the students get the student engagement. So chronic absenteeism, I mentioned that before already, we have twice a month meetings with a tiered protocol. Our counselors did a root cause analysis. We work with social workers, student care team meetings, student support meetings. We may bring in other support as the students need it, invite the families in to work with them and see what supports we can provide our students there. The dual enrollment AP and dual enrollment courses. We have increased the dual enrollment AP offerings at Osborne and increased the publicity of those courses. We're looking at, we revamped our counseling for a nine, more of a nine through 12 approach as far as getting that information out. And we also added this year, we added, or last year we added and this year again with our advanced academics resource teacher with Dr. Small. It helps out not only the GovSchool process, but our AP teachers, work with AP teachers and making sure everybody knows availability and they're prepared for these courses. So we've been focusing on the rigor of our courses, preparing students to be successful in AP and dual enrollment. And we've increased those offerings to our students. I do think this was a little bit of a hit coming out of COVID. I think when students were online for a year and then they came back to school, maybe didn't feel quite as ready to jump into an AP course right away. And I'm hoping that that's going to rebound now that they've been in school and we've been able to give them that rigor to prepare them for the higher courses, rigorous course AP and dual enrollment. C, CT credentials, again, we added to the econ, personal finance. We added a career strategies course this year and our work-based learning program's growing. And we're, our counseling has revamped as well to a nine through 12 approach. For example, last week, we had a junior parent night already talking about colleges and scholarships for colleges. So it's not waiting, we're starting earlier to educate the students and the parents on the different options they have. This ties into our strategic plan, inclusive collaborative learning environment. We have our targeted test remediation, GED, inclusive scheduling. We added blended learning academy, evening school has been great. The culture of caring, the student support team, positive change ambassadors. And our PBS is a foundation of our One Osborne culture. Like I said, we have 348 positive change ambassadors. We're doing a food drive now. Last month, it was red ribbon week. The month before that, it was stomp out bullying. But these kids, I mean, they just do an amazing job setting the culture of Osborne, making sure we're a welcoming environment, where everyone's welcome and accepted. And I'll add in there as well, culture caring was our addition of technology into our security of the school. I think it shows that, that we do care about our students' safety and our staff's safety. Quality workforce, cooperative learning strategies this year, we added in for more engaging. The roles in the CLT, our strong mentorship program, our team program. Our strong mentorship program, our team program, I wanted to shout out to our professional growth specialist, Dean Stevenson, but he works with Carrie Thorstens and Darsh and Maggie Connors. We have a very robust mentoring program for new teachers at Manassas City. I think that is exemplar for the, for the region. It's a multi-year program and the new teachers coming to Manassas City have that support, structured support. I'm very proud of that program here and thank you for Dean for that. Strong family, community partnerships. Besides the CTE, we've also been doing E3 series with the Manassas City Police Department, our PEP team meetings with Carmen Sorto, our family liaison. I'm proud of our PTSA as well. We have a strong PTSA that's involved and in support of our school. Couple of quick highlights here with our pictures there. I do want to highlight there, we have the partnership with George Mason University for students, seniors in Manassas City with a 3.25 or higher GPA to gain admittance to George Mason. We're very proud of that. We're still gathering data on how many students are following up and accepting that offer. It's a, we believe it's about a third so far, but I know this is the kind of season when those are coming in. Our extracurricular, co-curricular activities, again, equal access to everybody. Mr. Hawkins has done a great job with that. It's, you know, we're reducing barriers for kids. You know, we used to have athletic feet, we don't need more. You used to have class dues, no longer. Performing arts, same thing. You're going to get an instrument, you're going to get the uniforms, right? You're going to get free breakfast, lunch, dinner. You're going to get your AP tests paid for. You're going to get PSAT and SAT tests paid for. You're going to have free Saturday tutoring with, with meals and transportation. So, a lot of barriers have been reduced and Mr. Hawkins has done a tremendous amount of work to provide equal access to all of our students, these programs. Our student government, SCA, I'm very proud of that program. It's grown, our student council has grown. We have two full classes now, 65 students and more that want to gain entrance into that and we've been working with the state student council association and been recognized. Our Avid program is another way to increase post-secondary options besides terrific grow Manassas program, of course, we have and, and our partners with George Mason, but this is another way to open up options. And our positive change ambassadors are in orange there. That was our stomp out bullying campaign. So, I'm proud of our kiddos for doing that. And I just want to end on our students. I'm just so proud of the work. When you see the data, the, and you've seen it because you've come to summer school graduations, you've seen all these stories behind kids, but at the end of the day, the kids are doing the work. They're passing the SOL. It's the same SOL, you take a patriot as you do at Osborne. It's no different. So, our kids are been, they've been doing the work. They've been putting in the work, they've been passing the tests and they, they deserve the credit for the increased graduation dropout rates. Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Flugrath.
Yep.
Statements or questions from the board? Christina, Mrs. Brooks?
Thank you so much for all of the effort and caring that you're putting into our students and your, and your staff. I look forward to seeing more, you know, increased updates, watch how you guys succeed. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ball?
Sure. There's just so much good to talk about and I thank you for standing up here and, you know, sharing all of this good news with us. Had the chance to attend the counseling planning session this week and it was just really impressive to see in action the nine through 12 plans, you know, and asking for grows and glows, you know, it's just, it's, it's good to see us asking for feedback, incorporating that into the plan for next year and, and then watching us go. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Thank you very much for that presentation. We've seen a lot of the numbers already, but I love to hear you come up here and, and talk so enthusiastically. First, I want to share, I, I want to correct something I said earlier about our elementary schools liking, I like the space of our, our new, the new concept of our elementary school. I think I used the terminology, you reminded me of it when you set it up here, work-based learning. I didn't mean work-based learning at the elementary school. I meant project-based learning. I can see the kids going outside and, you know, doing things with growing new trees, things like that, not, not work-based learning. Anyway, I want to correct that. So, I thank you for all your hard work. I also have to thank everybody on this board for supporting to, to, to grow the way Osborne High School students have grown. It takes a lot of support, takes a lot of staff and so I appreciate that from the board and the community in supporting, supporting us. I think we've got results and, and I think those results are going to continue to grow. So, I appreciate that and appreciate all of you. And anyway, I think that's it. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Great presentation, great job, but next time, when you say cycle that works, say it with your chest, use that, use that base. Again, great job, really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Breschek?
Thank, thank you very much. A great presentation and I found myself in a funny predicament when I was, you know, I usually share my questions with all of our presenters in advance and I was like, we get so many presentations on Osborne High School. I felt like most of the initiatives and, you know, major, you know, major efforts underway have been covered and I really, I see you taking the challenges of Osborne seriously. I see your staff taking the challenges of Osborne seriously and I, I see the students really buckling down and I want to make sure to commend you. I do think accreditation is in reach. I think we're very close and I hope that we can have a, a very triumphant conversation next year about that and also want to particularly commend the gains in math. I did also, I did want to talk about you, address this in your presentation, the CCCRI, CCCRI, CTE completers and number of children, kids enrolled in AP dual enrollment. So, what I heard you say with respect to AP, I mean, it makes a certain amount of sense to me that kids might be feeling academically weak as we're recovering out of, you know, large-scale virtual learning and all of that, but have we, what's happening with our CTE kids that those numbers have declined? Have the kids not started the pathways? Have the kids started the pathways but not finished? Have they gotten the way through the pathways, but then couldn't pass an industry exam? Like where, where's the friction for our CTE numbers?
But you hit on, you hit on a couple of them, you know, the exams, getting more students involved. It's a little bit of each of those areas. One of the ways we're addressing the recruiting more students is with the counseling revamped program and working with Chris Taylor to get students exposed earlier, touring what we have at Open House to tour all of our options because to see it in person, when you see construction management, and I know you've been there, you've seen them all, but you see the cosmetology, you see the EMT program, you see the nursing program, it, it does increase enrollment. So, part of it is awareness of it and getting more students enrolled. And as far as the AP and dual enrollment, we're really focusing on the rigor, preparing our students to be successful in those courses and have the confidence to do so. So, that's what we've been focusing on with our quality tier-one instruction, but also working hand in hand with Dr. Small, our advanced academics coordinator, working with our teachers to prepare those. Last week, we took a tour of our math teachers, took a tour of the gov school to see, our teachers could see firsthand what the rigor looks like so they can, and in January, we're taking our science teachers over there. So, it's, it's a multi-pronged attack to, to increase that, yeah.
Thank you for that response. I also wanted to ask about the graduation rate, which of course, everybody is happy to see kids graduating, but a diploma is just a piece of paper if it doesn't, if it's not, you know, backed up with the skills to be successful in life. And I do, you know, I did, this was my fault for not being very clear in my email to you, but the upward trend started in 2020, which is a surprising point to start an upward trend. Have we given any thought as to why the upward trend started in 2020?
I think, you know, to be honest, that's, that's, I can speak to that because that was my first year at Osborne, 2019, 2020 and at the point when I was honored to, to come to Osborne, that was the emphasis given to me by the board and, and the superintendent. We need to monitor and focus on on-time graduation rate and figure it. So, that was, one of the keys to our on-time graduation plan we started with in the fall of 2019 was monitoring those students, providing, we started the blended learning academies. We switched from Apex to Admentum. We created the on-time graduation position. We created the blended learning teacher positions. So, we started implementing interventions at that point to not only monitor the students, but give them other opportunities to succeed, multiple opportunities to succeed. And I think that's one of the reasons this started because we started tracking it and monitoring it so closely at that point. I can't speak to before that time, but it was a difficult year. As you know, in March, that was the year COVID hit, but I think that was one of the reasons is we, we made that a priority and we had a clear on-time graduation plan with support and staff. As Ms. Williams pointed out, we had support to, to follow through with that, so.
Thank you very much. You know, graduation dropout, these are all very important pieces of the puzzle. I'd like to see, and I hope to see next year, the rising tide raise all of the boats and I do think there are things that we can consider here on our end to maybe support more student engagement and work with their classes, but that's a discussion for the new year. So, that is all from me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. Um, I, I first want to, want to touch on the dropout rate. So, when we look at the dropout rate, and I need to go back to it, um, here we go. Nope, that's on-time graduation. So, when we look at, look at the dropout rate in 21, 22, when we talk about English language learners, that was 35.3%. That's huge. That's a third of our EL learners were not graduating. They were dropping out. But then we look 22 to 23, it drops to 18%. That's a 17% drop in dropouts in one year. That's phenomenal. I think that in and of itself speaks to student engagement. Students who are engaged stay in school. Students who are disengaged, dropout. That number went down by 17%. I think that's huge and I think we really need to recognize the importance of that. And I also, and when we look at the overall dropout rate, that was a 7.1% drop as well. It was cut in half. That tells us our students are a lot more engaged now than they were in 21, 22. So, I think a huge kudos goes out to the people who made that possible and all the hard work that they've done. When we look at the level three indicator of chronic absenteeism, we're hearing anecdotally, not just here in Northern Virginia, not just in Virginia, but about across the country about chronic absenteeism. Do you, and you may not have the answer to this, do you have any idea how many high schools or approximately how many high schools are being impacted like we were for chronic absenteeism?
So, I don't have a, a number for you, but I do know it is widespread and I'm on the state board for Virginia high school, secondary school principals and we came up with a joint letter as well to, to the VDOE as well with our elementary counterparts about this because it is, it is widespread across all economic levels and across all, from urban to rural to suburban areas and it's not unique to Manassas City or different parts of the state. It's, it's across the board. But I don't have a number, but I know that it is, I have compared us to our counterparts in Prince William and I'm, I'm proud of our students of making, making some gains right now, but I don't have a number of talk.
And the number, the percentage this year is much lower than it was at this time last year. That's correct?
Correct. We were in December last year, we were at 22% and in December this year, we're at 8%.
So, that's more than half?
Correct.
Well, I mean, you don't even need to do the math, but that's well more than half. So, that's, that's another really promising thing. And I did want to touch base on 2020 because I had a child graduate from high school in 2020. Schools shut down in March and there was no end of course testing. There were no SOL tests. There was nothing to end the year. So, kind of would be standard that we had a really high number of students graduating on time because the normal barriers that would have been in place were no longer in place. Not to say you're not doing a great job.
No, you're correct.
Because you absolutely are, but these numbers we're seeing since then, but I think that is a little caveat on 2020.
That's correct.
I mean, we, we had graduation, but how many days did it take to do graduation? Like a whole week?
It did. It was, it was eight days. We're out on our stadium field. I know you were there.
And we were in the rain.
Mm-hmm.
Inside, in a leaky auditorium.
That's right. It went raining, we came to the auditorium.
So, I think that's something we really need to keep in the back of our heads, that 2020 was a rather unique school year. And then I wanted to talk about, you mentioned so many things that Osborne staff did and is doing to support on-time graduation and reduce the dropout number. Can you just mention again, some of those above and beyond things, actions of our staff members at OHS?
Sure. Yeah, I'd be proud to. So, our staff members not only provide, you know, the quality instruction during the day, we have our targeted study resource classes during the day, but they also do remediation blitzes during the day. So, we pull kids out and our, for example, today, our soul studies teachers were working with all kids, getting, prepping them ready for the soul studies test. We did it for science last week. They also come in on Saturdays for the Saturday learning seminar. Our teachers provide targeted remediation and tutoring to our, to our students as well. Besides that, in the classroom itself, our teachers are circling back, spiraling back and doing catch-up days where they remediate students so they can, we like to say have multiple opportunities to succeed. So, they, if they didn't do well the first time, we'll go back and remediate, give them the support so they can be more successful the second time.
And then to, to handle the chronic absenteeism and the dropout rate, you mentioned home visits on Saturdays?
Right.
Can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. So, we have our attendance team meetings, like I said, twice a month and we'll identify students and Larry Gilligan, our attendance officer and Chair Skinker, our on-time grad coordinator, our deans as well, sometimes we'll go on Saturdays. And students that have chronic absenteeism where we're worried they, they maybe withdrew and we want to know where they are, we'll go to the doors and knock, we'll bring interpreter with us and find out where they're at. And sometimes it's just a matter of having that conversation. We had very good response from that, from families. We can explain the evening school option, we can explain the GED option to students and that's one of the reasons the dropout rate decreased too is when, when a student did withdraw, we wanted to make sure we knew where they went. We looked to see if they transferred to another jurisdiction, another state, are they still in the city and can we bring them in, one of our other alternative methods, whether it's summer school or GED so they can still continue their education, yeah.
And so, for our Osborne staff that's doing those things, those Saturday visits, that's kind of part of the job and they're not getting any extra bonus or anything out of that, are they?
No, it's more the expectation. I think it's the expectation and they have a sincere care. They'll, we have a joint collective responsibility for our students and I think everybody, there's a great buy-in at the school for that. It doesn't, you can talk to any of our teachers and they all know our goal for on-time graduation rate and I think that there's a collective belief in what we're doing can change lives there, yeah.
Well, I, I appreciate everything they do and I did, this is not really a question, it's more of a comment. You talked about removing, how many barriers have been removed for our students to participate and be engaged in the whole school community, not just in the academics. And I want people to remember and keep this in their minds that when we reduce those barriers, things like instruments, band uniform, different kinds of tests, breakfast, lunch, dinner, all of those things cost money and the cost doesn't just disappear. It's absorbed by the school division so that the parents aren't faced with that burden. So, that sometimes later on down the road, unfortunately, sometimes those things end up on a chopping block and we don't want those things on a chopping block because we're seeing right here and now how important the removal of those barriers is to student engagement, student success and student on-time graduation. So, those are really important things to remember and I do know, I have heard it anecdotally out in the community, not just by employees, but by a parent and by students who say, I wouldn't be able to participate if I couldn't pay for this. I've actually had a teacher say to me, the selling point to work in Manassas City Public Schools was that every student was going to have a band instrument at school every day that was in good working condition and that's not something you see everywhere. So, kudos to everybody who makes that happen. Thank you for all you do and thank you for everybody at Osborne High Schools who's doing what they're doing to make this such a success. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
And I'll just wrap it up with my comments. I think you'd mentioned it, there was a small mention in your presentation about evening school. Can you talk about how that is? How late are our students working at night and our staff?
So, right now, we have, they work till 8:30, answer your question. So, we have 26 students in our evening school right now and they go from 26 students in our evening school right now, and they go from 5:30 to 8:30. We do provide them a dinner before that. It's been very, in, in second semester, we'll have another opportunity for students to enroll again. So it's done by semesters, first semester, second semester. Been very widely accepted and welcomed by our students that have different obligations during the day, whether it's work, and many of them have their own children to take care of during the day, to be able to come in at night. So it's a tight group. I know you've been to visit, but we've seen a lot of success out of that. And we also have an evening GED program as well. So we have eight students right now in our GED program.
Thank you, Mr. Flugrath. I'd just like to congratulate you and your staff on all the glows. And I also want to tell you that I appreciate you acknowledging the grows, and I know you're working hard on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up on our agenda, also about student achievement, Dr. Ed Stevenson, Director of Instruction, will provide an update on the division's implementation of Virginia's All-In initiative to support the academic success of our students. Welcome, Dr. Stevenson.
Thank you. Should I just proceed?
Sure.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the school board, and Dr. Newman. I am pleased to have the opportunity to briefly outline the Manassas City Public Schools' plan to meet requirements and recommendations from the state government and VDOE associated with recent additional educational funding. Just by way of background, about one month into this school year, the General Assembly passed and the governor signed a bill that included additional flexible funding to school divisions to address learning loss recovery needs, implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, and operating and infrastructure support costs. The bill also requires divisions to report how their use of the funds will address reading and math performance and Virginia Literacy Act implementation to the state. With the passage of the bill, the governor provided recommendations for the use of these funds in the form of his All-In Virginia Plan. An extensive number of recommendations were released, which included a 24-page playbook for addressing learning loss. On this slide, you will find a summary of the governor's leading recommendations, which are focused on addressing learning gaps through consistent instruction that is tailored to student needs, targets the meeting of grade level content standards and skills, and is informed by accurate assessment data. The governor also released recommendations from or for the allocation of state funds approved this fall, 70% for the All-In program and 20% for implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. Our school division is following these recommendations through the funding of staff positions that will be supporting and carrying out MCPS's implementation of All-In and the VLA. The Virginia Department of Education required the submission of a spending plan signed by the superintendent before dispersing these funds in regular installments. We submitted the MCPS plan to VDOE, and it was approved by the state superintendent in early November. We have until the end of the 2025, 26 school year to expend these funds, which we plan to do over the course of fiscal years 2025 and 26. This allows these funds to be accounted for as part of regular budget planning cycles. We are not currently aware of any additional state reporting requirements attached to these funds. However, the governor's plan does include recommendations for regular progress monitoring, and we do use valid and reliable data sources to include common formative and benchmark assessments, diagnostic tests and inventories, and platform-based progress monitoring tools to regularly evaluate the effectiveness of the programs these funds support. MCPS chose to use its targeted support block to meet All-In program recommendations. There were additional approaches that the governor's plan recommended that we decided not to pursue. These included academic support sessions during an extended school day, on weekends, during breaks, or during the summer, something the state playbook refers to as intercession. However, school day programs to address learning loss were the top recommendation in the playbook, and the existing targeted support program that was implemented in 22, 23 strongly aligns with key aspects of the governor's plan to include number of weeks, hours per week, tools and resources, staff qualifications, and assessment and progress monitoring processes. So we chose to use this program to fulfill these recommendations. We are adding additional platforms and tools to the program to help us better target the needs of students in the areas the state has identified. In some cases, particularly when it comes to our upcoming use of the Ignite Reading Support Program, this also means altering the grouping of students and scheduling of targeted support throughout the day. So while the basic framework we established last year for the targeted support program remains the same, the implementation has been enhanced and adjusted based on the resources the state has provided. We are also supplementing learning loss efforts in targeted support with before and after-school academic sessions. I do want to note that while these kinds of programs are not new to our school division, the All-In recommendations have helped us to stand up individual school programs outside of school hours to target learning gaps. Students have been identified for them based on academic need and then invited to participate. The support is provided mostly by teachers, but in some individual cases by other trained staff. The program utilizes platforms and tools that allow for personalization of the experience to meet specific student needs. The primary focus of these programs is the addressing of reading and math performance, and they serve about 500 students at the elementary, intermediate, and middle school levels division-wide. The program features mirror many aspects of the school day targeted support program to include the use of grade level materials and progress monitoring through a cycle that works. 20% of the funding will be used for staff members that will be heavily involved in implementing and supporting the VLA. We are preparing a core literacy resource recommendation for presentation to the school board in January. Local professional learning around our adopted program will be rolled out to teachers during the second semester. State-level training on practices, screening, and diagnostic tools with reading support teachers is already underway and will be expanded to teachers later in the school year. We are also working on standing up a system for the creation and tracking of individual reading plans required by the VLA beginning next school year. So I would like to close tonight's presentation by emphasizing that MCPS has the strategic priorities, structures, and dedicated staff to effectively utilize the state funds we are being provided to address learning loss and implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. Our approved plan funds key priorities in the 2025 and 26 fiscal years in a way that will enhance our school division's ability to meet student needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stevenson. Any statements or questions from the board? Sure. Anyone else?
Just wanted to clarify, can you help me understand how many students you said that we have before and after for these particular targeted support groups?
So for the, for the program during the day, it's, it's all of our students, but in grades K through 8. Of course, the focus of All-In is grades 3 through 8, so we actually go beyond the scope.
Okay.
But for the after and before-school programs, it's a little over 500 students that regularly participate.
That's what I wrote down. I just want to make sure that was correct. Thank you.
Mrs. Breschek?
Thank you very much for a very thorough presentation. I just have one additional question. You mentioned that we had considered intercession options, like, you know, summer or weekend. I mean, we do have a Saturday seminar at Osborne from time to time, but why were the, why did we reject those in favor of the targeted support enhancement?
We felt that because we already had a program in place that mirrored very closely the highest recommendation, if you read the playbook, you'll see that they recommend school divisions first look to provide the All-In recommendations during the regularly-scheduled school hours of the students because that's when it's the best time to reach the most students. So we decided to go with that option because that lined up the best with what the state recommended.
I see. That's it for me. Thank you.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Yep. Um, thank you for that presentation. This is a lot to digest because it's a lot that's going on. So when it comes to the funds provided by the state, by the General Assembly, is there any cost matching required by the localities?
No, actually, the bill explicitly states there will be no matching requirement.
Okay, good. Um, then, so we've got approximately 500 students. Are they meeting before and after school or just after school?
In most schools, it's after school, but in our elementary schools that have later schedules, they're going before.
Yeah, that was a question because they don't get out of school till after four. Are there any associated costs with like feeding them, transportation before and after school?
There are, but we are able to cover those with our current operating budgets.
Okay, so those costs are from the operating budgets, not from the funding?
No.
Okay, so those are costs we're absorbing as well?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we're working with 500 students right now across the division, K through 8 before and after school. Do we have room to grow, to add more students if we need to?
That number really represents the number that we've been able to get to regularly participate. Yeah.
Okay. And how long has it been going on?
Some schools started as early as late October. Most, though, did not get started till sometime in November.
Okay. And then is it going to run till the end of the school year or run till SOL testing?
Most of the schools have plans to run a session in the fall and then in the spring, but that does vary somewhat from school to school.
Okay, so that's a, that's a site-based decision?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and how were the students identified? Was it a combination of teacher recommendation, parent request?
It's not really parent request. It's a combination of looking at what the data tell us about needs, who's most in the need of reading and math support, and then, you know, working with those, those parents and students to get them in.
And then the state is developing tools to measure student progress within the programs, but they have not identified or finalized what that is yet, correct?
So this, what the state has done so far is they have contracted with two vendors for reading and one vendor for math support. And we are utilizing the, the vendors that they have approved. And within those platforms, there are progress monitoring tools. So the Ignite Reading Intervention, for example, that we're going to be kicking off in January, has very structured one-on-one tutoring sessions with diagnostic and regular progress monitoring as one example.
So that because those programs are the programs offered, recommended by the state, will that data automatically go to the state, or will we have to still put that data together to send to the state?
I do not believe the state collects any of that data. They, they provide the programs, they pay for them, but we are able to use them the same way we would use a locally purchased version of that program.
Okay, so they're, they're just providing the program?
Yes.
We've got the oversight. We've got the monitoring, the implementation, all of those pieces. Okay.
Correct.
I think that's all my questions right now. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And this is a lot to digest, and it will be interesting to see where this goes. So thank you.
And you're coming back to us in January?
Yes.
Okay. And Dr. Newman, did you have some more information for Vice Chair Stevens?
Yes. During Mr. Flugrath's presentation, you asked how many high schools were at Level III for chronic absenteeism. And our good friend, Dr. Casada down there, was working on that, and this 121 high schools were at Level III.
Thank you, Dr. Casada. Okay. All right. Our next item is New Business Joint Compensation Committee Recommendation and Discussion. Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just trying to open up my notes. So many presentations tonight. Between the City Council and School Board, a compensation ad hoc committee was created to look at and address compensation discrepancies between our school division and surrounding school divisions. Our goal is and has been to come up with a long-term plan to address compensation differences between our division and local divisions. We've met in September, October, November, and most recently, December 6th. The members of the committee are myself, School Board Member Robin Williams, Vice Mayor Pam Sebeski, and City Council Member Sonia Vasquez Luna. At our most recent Compensation Committee meeting, we examined three different, we have $1.5 million in recurring funds from the City Council, from the city, that we need to use towards compensation. At our last committee meeting, we looked at three different options for use of the $1.5 million. The options were to address staff on teacher scale with a 2.2% raise, to correct capped steps for a body of approximately 76 teachers. Their teachers, and I may not be able to explain it as succinctly as Mr., as Dr. Newman, he may step in to explain it, but at one point in the City of Manassas Public Schools, steps were capped. And steps are where teachers are or where employees are based on the number of years of service. Manassas City, along with many other school divisions, put caps on the number of steps someone could be credited with when they came into the school division. Later on, some years later, the cap was removed to entice people to come work for our school division. But unfortunately, the individuals who were working in the school division who were under the cap were not grandfathered in, and their caps were not lifted. So our second option was to correct the capped steps. Our third option was to create a unified pay scale, which was something that was recommended to us earlier this year through the Corn Fairy Study on compensation specifically for non-teacher staff. The Compensation Committee, through discussion on December 6th, determined, made the recommendation to bring back to City Council and to the school board that we would correct the cap steps at a cost of approximately $986,359.47. The remaining $500,000 would be used towards those on the teacher scale in the form of a 1% raise. Last night at the City Council meeting, the City Council unanimously adopted the resolution to release the funds necessary to correct the cap step and to provide the 1% salary raise for those on the teacher scale. That's what's up for discussion tonight. A secondary thing that I would like us to consider, independent of the work done by the Compensation Committee, is to allocate a $1,000 bonus to everyone on the teacher scale for the 22, 23 school year to take from the fund reserve. So any discussion, thoughts, questions, from fund balance, excuse me, any thoughts, questions, discussions, concerns, or Ms. Williams, anything you would like to add? Because I'm sure I'm forgetting something.
I do, I do want to, I, I was at the City Council meeting last night, and I, I realized we confused salary increases to the teacher's scale versus, versus an increase of a 1% raise to teachers only. I believe, maybe we should clarify this with City Council, but last night at their meeting, they distinguished between the teacher's scale and teachers only.
Right, and that is something we do have to discuss. Whether it's everyone on the teacher's scale or teachers only, I believe according to Dr. Newman in a document that he provided at the most recent Compensation Committee meeting on December 6th, there are a total of- there are a total of, how many positions did you say it was that we are? Okay, that's just central office staff. That's a number that we need to look into to find out exactly what number of individuals on the teacher's scale are not actually teachers in a classroom.
I was just going to say, if I, yeah, that's part of the reason why we really do need to extend this discussion and give us some more time to really hone in on all the numbers. For teachers only, I don't have a number of teachers, but Mr. Hawkins shared that it would be for teachers only, 567,900 for a 1% increase.
Yes. And so, what would happen with that 1% increase? Since that 1% increase would be over the 500,000, the School Board would absorb the remaining cost because the 500,000 would cover approximately 0.75% in a teacher raise for teachers or the teacher's scale, whatever that is determined to be. And so, the school division would absorb the additional cost.
Go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Newman.
I just, I mentioned this at the Joint Committee meeting for compensation, and I want to get it out now before you guys even have the discussion. Regardless of your vote tonight, if it is a vote to do anything additional with the 1.5, it is no way possible that we would be able to meet the January 1 requirement to implement it. It would be something that would be retroactively corrected. Our finance staff is working on getting the payroll done, the regular pay. And winter break is coming up, and unless this board is going to tell me that people cannot take time off during the break, there is no way that this could be done for January 1. But I just want to reiterate that so there's not an expectation for people to look at their pay and say, where is my raise?
And I do also want to put it out there that we are not looking to waive second reading to vote tonight because this is something we need to discuss because there are a few unknown parameters such as who on the teacher's scale is not a teacher and whether it should be everyone on the teacher's scale or just the teachers. So, those are a few numbers that we do need to hammer out. And it is my personal belief that the School Board, as a board, needs to have the opportunity to discuss and look at this from all angles before making a decision.
You can do, yes.
In case anyone's phone goes off, the fire alarm did go off at Osborne. We have a basketball game tonight, and the popcorn machine and the concession stand set it off. So, just in case you hear something, we did have an issue with the fire alarm at Osborne.
Thank you for that highlight, Dr. Newman. Questions from the board, Mrs. Breschow?
I wanted to add that the Joint Compensation Committee's work has not concluded, correct?
No, thank you for asking that question. No, the Joint Committee's work is not concluded. We are meeting again January 17th, and the goal, once we come to a decision on the 1.5 million, which we plan on bringing that up for a vote January 9th at our first regular School Board meeting on January 9th, the Compensation Committee is meeting January 17th to start looking at and developing a long-term plan to correct compensation deficiencies or discrepancies between our school division and surrounding school division because one of the things that we would like to do as a school division is to remain within a mean of 5% of surrounding municipalities to include Manassas Park and Fakir County. And one of our priorities is to reduce the teacher pay gap that continues, and that continues to be a focus on a sustainable, long-term plan throughout the budget session.
Thank you. I wanted to give you the opportunity to expand on that.
It's been a very long meeting, and there's a lot of information going out and percolating around inside my head right now, so.
Vice Chair, we have a work session scheduled for January 2nd, right after our organizational meeting. Is that going to be an acceptable time to meet to discuss this, or do we need to plan something sooner?
I think if we have enough time set aside, and Ms. Williams, you can either concur or disagree with me, if we have enough time set aside during the work session to discuss this, I think it would be an opportune time. And the work session on January 2nd is open to the public?
And is that acceptable by City Council?
I have not spoken to City Council about that. I did share with them that we were not looking to, I did share with Vice Mayor Sebeski that we were not looking to vote tonight because I felt it would be premature, and I felt that School Board members would like more information before this comes to a vote. So, I believe that that really is in the best interest for us to make a wise decision.
Any other questions or statements from the board at this time?
If nobody else has any, I have some more to add.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I really appreciate your summarizing our work because you, I think you covered everything very, very well. Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Stevens, for that. I just want to share a little background, why the committee chose the options they chose, or a variation of the options. And anybody, and Dr. Newman, if you need to correct me, you can. The cap, if we have 76 teachers, which the number of teachers started out, I believe, 120 years and years and years ago, ever since I've been on this board, we have not been able to address this difference. The pay is not fair. It's not fair. So, we had never been able to address this difference and correct the issue. We just didn't have the funding to do that. We have the funding now. And at our April joint meeting with City Council, we highlighted the salary gap of our teachers. And it was the largest gap we have out of all of our work families at the moment. So, City Council really, really wants us to make sure we address that issue. And by addressing the 76 teachers now, just get them up to where they should be. We value these teachers. They've been with us for a long time. They have been loyal to us. They're experienced. One of the highlights from the J-Lark study that I mentioned earlier is a lot of the new, they're new teachers, a lot of teachers with provisional licenses. Studies show that our children benefit, and they increase their learning opportunity with experienced teachers. So, we've got our loyal, experienced teachers. The teacher shortage nationwide, that's why we chose to address the 76 teachers. We've got some money left over, so we'd like to increase, try to close that gap a little bit. We're never going to eliminate the gap compared to some of our larger districts around us, but we can certainly begin chipping away at that delta. So, that's why we just chose a 1% increase to teachers only. Then that would leave us, leave the school system about $54,259 to make up the difference. And Mr. Hawkins felt like we could definitely do that. So, that's where, I just wanted to kind of give a background of where the committee, where we, what we were thinking, where we came from, and how we concluded this suggestion, this recommendation. I also want to share, at the City Council meeting last night, it was voted unanimously on the resolution to reallocate funds from the General Fund to the schools contingent on the school's acceptance of the committee's recommendation. We've already talked about this, but the City Council also extended the resolution to allow the committee to continue its work through 2024. We hope, we hope it won't take the entire year of 2024, but we've got that leeway. So, I hope that information is a little bit more helpful and perhaps, perhaps we all have a little bit of a starting point where we can really continue our discussions, which I'm looking forward to.
And I did want to add, at one point, for a good period of time, Manassas City Public School's salary was very similar and in line with Prince William County. But in 2021, 2022, Prince William County restructured their salaries, which resulted in a huge gap between the two divisions. Up until then, we had really been neck and neck with Prince William County. So, it wasn't that this was an issue that was allowed to fester for a long period of time. It was a very quick occurrence. And we do want to reduce that gap, and this is, these are our first steps in reducing the gap.
Any other questions, statements from the board? Mrs. Ball?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief, but I do want to try to establish for the record the magnitude of what I think the problem is and, you know, good reason why it does require a little bit more talking before we vote. Trying to organize my thoughts, I just want to state, or ask Dr. Newman, we have received an MEA position on this decision. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe the entire board received it. They did a survey, I think 100 of their members completed the survey. 73% believe that the funding should have, should go to the entire teaching scale or teachers. That would increase the teacher's scale by 2.2%, which would actually get us 3.2% closer to Prince William. And then, 27% of their body supported correcting the 76.
Thank you. And when I reference Chair, or Vice Chair Stevens', you know, quick occurrence statement about the current problem and the gap that we're discussing, there are a couple other situations that are kind of looming that I think, you know, deserve our attention. And, you know, they need to be part of a longer-term plan. And so, I think that, you know, if you could just explain, when we look at this payment, the placement scale or the steps, I notice three years are the same. If you can explain how that happened, when that happened, and if it relates to the problem that we're talking about tonight.
When we went to the board three years ago, I think, Andy, it's three, to ask to remove the cap so we can try to entice some senior veteran teachers, it was a priority of that board that we didn't have any new MCPS employee coming in that was at a higher rate than someone that started their time in Manassas and never left. In order to do that, in 2010 and 2011, there was a pay freeze. And so, that impacted every Manassas City employee that was in the family at that time. So, to make sure that we honored the will of the board, you'll notice that three years are the same. I think it's up to Step 21 now, and it goes back to that two-year freeze.
So, we have a 2010, 2011 problem that's been inherited that is in addition to the capping problem that we're trying to address tonight. And then, we also have the unified scale issue, which is not having anything to do with teachers. It's completely separate from any of our teacher's scales. Is that correct?
The unified scale does not include teachers, but it impacts the teacher's scale. What the unified scale would do, it would remove, I want to say it's 28, but don't quote me on that, individuals that are on the teacher's scale that are not actual classroom teachers. Those positions, you have the athletic trainer, you have nurses, you have speech, and maybe a couple others would be removed off the scale. So, then, when you are actually addressing the teacher's scale, it would just be teachers. So, it has an impact on teachers when you look at the scale, but it does, the funding would not impact it to go to the unified scale.
Okay, and again, I'm just trying to establish the depth and the scope of the problem. So, you know, my, I think probably my last question of you is just that, you know, we've established timeline-wise that in March, a gap was identified, March of 2023. To be significant, you know, it was revealed by the city that $1.5 million may be available on or around that timeframe, April to May. The city expressed concern as to how we plan to spend it, and so, this Joint Compensation Committee was formed. But here we are, we are nine months later, and so, we're trying to figure out, you know, the best use of the money. But I do wonder if we're going to be starting at the middle of the year. There's still a whole, there's $750,000 at play right now, but in theory, there's $1.5 million that hypothetically would have been available from the beginning of the school year.
Going to step in real quick. One of the things was, the $1.5 million did not become a topic of conversation. We could not address or discuss the $1.5 million because we did not yet have an approved budget from the governor. We had to hold off on any discussion of an approved budget from the governor because of the cost from the raises that came down from the state, what our cost would be. So, we had to hold off until we got the governor's approved budget, which was, when did we get the governor's approved budget? General Assembly's approved budget. In early November. So, that's when that came into the conversation. And one of the things about the three different options, whether we're looking at the staff on the teacher's scale, giving the 2.2% raise, the cap step, or the unified scale, each problem is exclusive, and solving one doesn't solve the other, but there aren't funds to solve all three.
Understood.
So, this is very much so, something, it's a complex situation that creating the unified scale doesn't solve the caps, and it doesn't necessarily guarantee that all teachers will get a raise. There's the potential that some in that process, or some people moved from the three scales that we currently have, teacher, admin, and support, there is the potential that some people may be negatively impacted. But we wouldn't know that information until we started the process. And from what I know, the most labor-intensive process would be to move to that unified scale.
Agreed.
So, it's a challenging situation in that there are these three different things that could be done, and no one solves all three, unfortunately. At the time, when we met, the Compensation Committee recommended, the recommendation was to correct the 76, provide that 1% teacher raise with the school division absorbing the cost that went above and beyond the allocation from City Council. And that's what the recommendation is before the board. We can, at a later time, I think outside of the Compensation Committee, have further discussions on the unified scale because I think there are many unknowns about it because it's not something that I believe we have a school, as a school board, have gone into an in-depth conversation about it and what exactly it means. And that is where we are right now.
Thank you for that clarification, and I do like the $1,000 bonus idea, you know. We'd have to look at that a little bit more in-depth, and that's kind of why I was trying to allude to the other money that had been previously set aside. But thank you, and, you know, we have our work cut out for us.
And I want to be very clear. My suggestion of a $1,000 bonus is independent of the $1.5 million from, allocated from City Council. And that would be a one-time bonus coming from Fund Reserve.
Any other questions, statements? All right, so, yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to say that I'm glad that we're going to take some time to really kind of look at these numbers a little closer because I want to see what it looks like and make sure we're taking care of everybody.
Great, so let's just affirm, is everybody, is it the will of the board to extend this conversation to our work session on January 2nd? conversation to our work session on January 2nd?
And I just want to say that bringing this up as a discussion item tonight and not voting on it tonight, voting at our next regularly scheduled school board meeting where this is an action item is standard school board operating protocol. We, when possible, prefer not to waive a second reading and vote on something right away, especially when it is something of a magnitude like this. So discussing it as a discussion item tonight and then voting on it at our next school board meeting as an action item is standard school board protocol for this situation.
Thank you. So the timeline on this would be January 2nd. We have further discussion, we have other things too. And then our next school board meeting would be January 9th where we would vote. And then the employee compensation committee has a meeting on January 17th.
Yes.
And we'll probably have a second meeting in January. And then I believe that the, when you have your employee compensation committee, what you, the work that you do there, council members will take that forward to their retreat at the end of January.
Yes.
Okay. So what I'd like to say is I, I want to thank Vice Chair Stevens and Mrs. Williams for participating on the employee compensation committee. This is really important work, and thank you for what you've brought forward to us. Together with Vice Mayor Sebeski, Councilwoman Vasquez Luna, our superintendent Dr. Newman, interim city manager, Chief Keen, and both the Manassas City Public School staff and the city staff. You've all been working very hard on this, and it's very much appreciated. I see a light at the end of the tunnel. I really hope that we can bring this forward so we can support our staff. Anything else you'd like to say, Dr. Newman? Okay. All right, I'm going to move along on our agenda. Where, to the action agenda, folks. And our first item on the action agenda is our presidential primary. We have a recommended action that we approve the change of the school calendar to close the division on March 5th because of a presidential primary where our schools are being used for polling and...
And can I interject real quick?
Yes.
The registrar for voting did make the recommendation to our school division and the surrounding school divisions that they all close on primary day and not even have it be a teacher work day. That was the recommendation, and that's statewide, correct?
I don't want to speak for the state. I don't want to speak for the state, but I know that was the recommendation that we And not to speak out of turn, but I know that there was a email asking if that day could be turned into a teacher work day in place of another teacher work day, and that just can't be accepted at this time to fulfill the wishes of the registrar.
And that was, that request was made of other school divisions as well, not just
So can I get a motion?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the FY '24 calendar change for the school division to be closed on March 5th, 2024 during the presidential election.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the FY '24 calendar change for the school division to be closed on March 5th, 2024 during the presidential election. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Next up, we're on our fiscal year '25 capital improvement plan. We've seen this several times. There's nothing new, right? Mr. Hawkins? And I will ask...
Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the FY 2025 capital improvement plan.
Second.
As presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Ball, seconded by Vice Chair Stevens, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the FY 2025 capital improvement plan as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, now...
Year-end financial report.
Mr. Hawkins with our year-end financial report.
So, so good evening. To answer your question, there's no, there have been no changes to the CIP. We've, we've discussed it multiple times and had public input session, public hearing. So thank you for approving the FY '25 CIP as presented. Now, tonight, we want to talk about the FY '23 financial closeout. Also attached in your packet are the audit reports that were completed by independent auditing firm that indicates that both the city and the schools received an unqualified opinion, which means we had a clean audit report. So before I get started on the FY '23 financial closeout, I do want to recognize all of the staff, the directors, the bookkeepers, the administrators throughout the division. We have had tens of thousands of transactions completed, millions of dollars was, has been expended, and all of it done within, with transparency and accuracy that we received this clean audit report. So kudos goes to them for all of their efforts. Next, if we go to the FY '23 PowerPoint, Ms. Garza, we'll start off with a breakdown by fund by the school operating fund, the federal grants fund, and the, and the school food fund, shows all the funds across. If we, I know you can't see that on your screen right now, so let's just go down to the next slide, please. And the next slide shows, back up one slide, Ms. Garza. So this is the revenue that was actually received in a breakdown by where we've got the money from, from the city, from the state, federal, and other. And you can receive that we received about 125,409,000 dollars worth of revenue in the school operating fund. The next slide documents how much money we spent, how we spent that, those funds. Over 84 and a half million dollars that were spent on instruction with a total of 123.5 million dollars worth of total expenditures. So when you, when you net those two numbers together, when you combine your revenue versus your expenditures, you'll see that we had a difference of 1.8 million dollars. So we expended, if you do the math, we expended 98.5% of all of our funds received, pretty doggone good. Not sure that you and your spouse could spend out of the same checkbook and get 98.5% and not lose. 1.8 sounds like a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money when your budget's 125 million, right? And I've got hundreds of people spending out of our checking account, so very good going forward. So what we, on June the 30th, we had a little over 311,000 dollars worth of outstanding purchase orders that we would like to be carried over into FY '24. So tonight, I'm, I'm requesting that the school board waive second reading and approve this request tonight.
Andy, I just want to say something because we just talked about not waiving second reading. This was discussed at the joint, not the, the budget work session, so it isn't the first time that the board is seeing or discussing this item.
We had a, we had a budget work session on November, November the 28th, and we discussed this at that time. So yes, this is the second time that the school board has actually received this presentation. So are there any, any comments, questions, concerns?
I move that the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve the operating carryover request in the amount of 311,152 dollars.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Ball, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, for the city of Manassas, waive second reading. Waive second reading and approve the operating carryover request in the amount of 311,152 Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Before we go on to the next one, Andy, can I get a correction on this one? Presidential primary, presidential election.
So we need to remake the motion for the presidential primary because the motion was written presidential election. So I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the FY '24 calendar change for the school division to be closed on March 5th, 2024 during the presidential primary.
I have a corrective motion from Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the FY '24 cal, whoa, let's see. Approve, yeah, approve the FY '24 calendar change for the school division to be closed on March 5th, 2024 during the presidential primary. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you for that correction. All right, moving along. Approve CIP. Mr. Hawkins?
Okay. So also at the November the 28 budget work session with the school board, we discussed the revision of the budget for FY '24. As you know, we've had unprecedented delay in, in adopting the budget from the state. Our school board, we adopted a budget on March 28th. We really, we didn't get a final version from the state until early November. So we, so we're coming to get, tonight to ask for formal approval for the FY '24 budget. The only thing that really changed between the budget that was adopted by the school board on, on March 28th and today is increasing our salaries for our, our staff by 3%. The state gave us some money for a 2% increase, and the school board with this action will move 960,000 dollars from the capital improvement plan funding back to the general operating fund to increase all staff salaries by additional 1%. So, Alba, can you go to the PowerPoint, please? I'll go through it real quick. So on your screen, you have a breakdown by fund of, of all of the operating, of all the funds. I'll just go over the operating fund, the breakdown, where we have our total budget's 139,512,000 dollars roughly. Our total revenue, our expenditures are the same with about 128 million, almost 128.5 million going in the school operating fund. The federal grant fund is over 4.1 million, school food service 4.2, and our debt service fund is 655,000. And our capital projects fund that I've mentioned earlier has been reduced from 3 million dollars to 2 million 40,000 dollars with that 960,000 difference going toward staff salary increases. So our total budget for FY '24 revised budget is now 139,512,865. So how is the expenditures broken down? You can see on your screen nearly 100 million dollars. 99,671,000 dollars have been spent on, or be spent on instruction. Administration attendance and health is 8.9, transportation 5 point, almost 5.3, operations and maintenance 9.6, food services is 4 million dollars roughly, technology at 7.7. So that's, that's the breakdown of all the funds to, that equals 139,512,865 dollars. Here's a graph that documents how the funds will be spent. Nearly three out of every four dollars will be spent on instruction. So like I was saying before, the only major change between the proposed budget that we're going, asking for to be adopted tonight and the original budget on March 28th is the 3% additional salary increase for all staff effective January the 1st, 2024. Are there any questions, concerns, comments at this time?
Seeing and hearing none, can I get a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading, approve the FY '24, '28 five-year forecast and the FY '23, '24 budget as presented in the amount of 139,512,865, and authorize the school board chairman to transmit the 2024 CIP, 2024, I'm sorry, 2024 and 2028 five-year forecast, and these estimates to the city council of Manassas in accordance with the school board policy and Virginia State Code.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading, approve FY 2024 to 2028 five-year forecast and the FY 2023 to 2024 budget as presented in the amount of 139,512,865, and authorize the school board chair to transmit the 2024 CIP, 2024 to 2028 five-year forecast, and these estimates to the city council of Manassas in accordance with the school board policy and Virginia State Code. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Up next is school board member comments, and I will go first to our student representatives. Ms. Island?
We learned a lot of great news tonight regarding our choir students at OHS, alterations to the Jenny Dean concept design, the creation of an outline to support MCPS students, and the decrease in dropout rates at Osborne High School. With that being said, we covered a lot of information tonight, so please stay tuned for updates in our upcoming January meetings. Before I pass the mic to Ashley, I would like to implore everyone to take care of their mental health with holidays coming up. I'd also like to wish everyone a relaxing winter break, and I cannot wait to see you all in 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Island. Ms. Bland, let's hear from you.
Good evening. Congratulations to everybody selected for all district choir. This is a great achievement, and I wish everybody the best. The end of the quarter is approaching within a few weeks. Let's make sure we're all caught up on assignments so we can finish the semester strong. Lastly, as someone who has spent part of my elementary school years at Jenny Dean, I am so happy to hear all the progress being made on the new building. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Presha?
I also would like to extend my congratulations to the choir. And regarding the end of the quarter that is upcoming, just take it from your wiser elders. Do not tell yourself you're going to do the work over winter break because you're just not, do it before winter break, just trust me on that. Otherwise, I'd like to wish the community, extend my warmest holiday wishes and a happy new year to everybody. This is my last regular meeting of my first year, and I can't believe it has gone by so fast. So thank you to the community for giving me this chance, and to my colleagues, it's been a real pleasure getting to know each of you. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams?
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. And again, thank you so much for your comments. Your comments are always very just on point, informative, recap of what we talked about and understanding that, yes, we all learn a lot during these meetings. So thank you both for that, for those comments. And of course, I have to concur, congratulations to our all district choir. I wanted to share also, one of, talking about Osborne High School and our students and the success of, of many of our students. Just Monday morning, we had one of our students graduate from the police academy, and guess where he's going to be employed? Right here in the city of Manassas. So I, I just wanted to share that. I also have to share because I put a lot of work into this, on Saturday, we have Duel of the Depots, which is a wrestling match, it's all day long. Come out, I don't know how many schools we will be hosting, it will be a lot, but we'd love to see any graduated wrestlers, families come and check it out. What I like about it most is here we are, little city of Manassas, and every coach, every referee, every year says to me, out of all the big schools around the little Manassas City schools, we have the best, the best, we host the best, what do they call it?
Turnaround?
No, the, the...
Lunch?
Yes, all the food. And I, I, what I love about it most is so many of our families make their homemade what... what, whatever country they're, they come from, whatever culture they, they are from, they make their food and bring it, and everybody loves it. So I, so it's just a great event. So anybody who is available Saturday, come on out. Also, yeah, I guess that's it, winter break. Enjoy it, relax with your family, we're not necessarily here every, we may not be here tomorrow, so relax, enjoy it, and, um, happy holidays.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks?
Great job to our choir members. We've also had a lot of, uh, great discussion and, um, information tonight, so it's, it's nice to be able to really, you know, find out what's going on. Uh, and happy holidays, happy, uh, Christmas, happy new year, and there's a lot of holidays. Happy winter break. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Fall?
Yes, I, I want to also thank our student reps for all of their hard work and attention to detail, um, throughout the beginning of this year. They've been really amazing partners, and, um, I enjoy them very much. I just want to say, um, that, you know, we're getting ready, when we come back in the new year, to enter into a budget season. Um, I'd like to acknowledge that when done right, budgeting for equity has to reach, touch, impact governance, policymaking, HR, facilities, technology, transportation, food services, PR, curriculum, instruction, athletics, parental engagement, student discipline, leadership development, community and business relations. Um, so we have a tough job ahead of ourselves, but I fully believe in the board that you have elected to budget through a, a student equity lens, which is, um, you know, one of, if not the, most important thing that we do. So 2023 was a special year, and I'm thankful to staff, students, family, and citizens for their hard work, um, and their dedication to our public school system. I'm thankful to work with my fellow professionals on the governance team, and I can't wait to lead the schools into 2024 and beyond. So happy holidays to everyone, and we will see you in January after our organizational meeting sets our new calendar for the year. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. Um, I want to address compensation yet again. Compensation is one of the most important things we can do, and it's a long, difficult process, and we are attempting to do what we're doing with a sense of equity and fairness in, ensuring that everyone is compensated appropriately and with regard to the hard work they do every day. As, um, Mr. Flugrath was speaking, he really touched on how many people are necessary and all the moving parts that go into making a school a successful school. So when we talk about compensation, we need to talk about all the things that we don't see happening. All those background things, everything, and all the people who work behind the scenes to make it all possible. Like everyone else has said, I want you all to have a safe and healthy holiday. For some of us, it's not as joyous a time. We remember the loss of loved ones, we may be apart from loved ones, we may be alone. If you're struggling in the holidays, reach out. If you know someone who's struggling during the holidays, reach out to them as well. Make it a special time for everyone, and maybe we'll get snow. So have a wonderful and safe holiday.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I wanted to say, I, I love nodding heads in the audience. That was really nice to see tonight. Um, we had some updated information for a lot of people out there, and it's important that we stop the misinformation, and, uh, we're working really hard to communicate with everybody and keep you posted. I've been spending a lot of my time at Jenny Dean Elementary, um, in my mind, looking for the future, and then also here today, I got to visit, um, in Ms. Johnson's class along with Mrs. Potts. Thank you for welcoming me into the classroom, and this was a special, uh, opportunity that was offered by MEA. They offered, um, for every school board member to come visit if we, if we had time, and to see what they do in the classroom. Uh, it was a great experience for me. We had a lot of talk about the importance of inclusion, and I made friends with some of our students, um, simply by working with them, and that was wonderful. Also, yesterday, I met here at Jenny Dean with the leadership team, um, to talk about their needs in the new school, and what's, what's the plan going forward, and, and the needs that they'll have for their classrooms. I've loved this work on, on new Jenny Dean. I love being here at old Jenny Dean and, um, working with the students, and it's just, it's, it's a work of the heart to think of what's coming forward and before us and in future years. I want to thank my fellow school board members for the discussion and your contributions throughout this evening and throughout the year and going forward into 2024. Thank you to Dr. Newman and all of the MCPS team and our clerk for providing us with information and feedback that helps us in our decision-making. And I just want to say happy holidays to each and everyone. Thank you.
Chair, I move that the school board meeting adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board meeting adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.